Kevin, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
What's going on in Hollywood? I wanted to begin by asking you to give us a very quick overview. Tell us about District 5. Tell us where it is and tell us what makes it unique in Hollywood.
So I'm glad you asked. First of all, thank you for inviting me here today. District 5 is the westernmost boundary. It's from the Turnpike West to the city line, from Sterling Road to Hollywood Boulevard. And there's a little sliver on the northeastern portion of my district that is actually part of District 4. So it's like 66th Avenue section is part of District 4. Other than that, 90% of west of the Turnpike is District 5. We have two community centers, four parks, the only city-owned community pool, and two sports fields for soccer, football, and baseball.
You've got all that western part of Taft Street, Johnson Street, right?
Correct.
Okay, west of the Turnpike. And like I said, I mean, you know, Hollywood's a big, dynamic place. What about District 5 is different from the other parts of the city, in your judgment?
District 5 homes are more moderately priced. It's a very working-class neighborhood. We do have five schools that I forgot to mention, including one or excluding one charter school, making it an additional one, that is a French emulsion learning school from 6th to 12th grade. Your eyebrows wiggled. So it actually teaches in both languages, English and French. It's a Long Davy Road extension, which also is a good asset for our community. We're a very diverse community, multiple different ethnicities. We have churches, synagogues, mosques. We're a very close-knit neighborhood, you know, it's regular-sized lots. It's not, you know, big sprawling lots like some areas of the city. And I'd like to say that they're more moderately priced homes, but you know, these days, nothing's really moderately priced.
Right.
Comparatively speaking, perhaps?
On your questionnaire with us, you listed as the three most important issues in the city at the moment, and I realize that could be, you know, this is a matter of judgment and it changes over time, but I believe that certainly you listed affordable housing, public safety, and taxes. I have a tax question, and then I'm gonna open the floor to my colleagues for questions too. But on taxes, Kevin, what's happening with the millage rate, with the property tax rate in Hollywood?
Our millage rate that we're going to theoretically approve tomorrow night is 7.4665. That is the base millage rate for our general fund. In addition, there is obviously the GOB millage rate that was approved by the voters in 2004 and 2019. So it's just over 8%, but the general operating millage rate was reduced a little bit due to last year's increase.
Okay. All right.
I voted against.
When last we checked, when last we checked, there was a petition drive underway. There's an effort, as a result of the controversy involving the high-rise on the beach, there is a, there has been an effort by residents to create or to force some sort of a citywide referendum on these issues. Am I right?
Correct.
And where does that stand?
The city attorney had mentioned at a meeting a couple months ago that the petition doesn't meet the guidelines set forth in our charter. It was discussed with all the commissioners, and when it was discussed at a commission meeting, the one particular commissioner that has been vocally opposed to the project didn't dispute the city attorney's findings. I don't know.
Commissioner Shuham, you mean?
Yes. And I don't know what the particular language is in the petition, if it meets the charter guidelines. So the charter sets out, you know, step by step on what guidelines need to be and what language needs to be in any petition drive. And I don't know that it meets that. I haven't seen it. You know, nobody sees it till it's turned into the clerk. At that time, it goes to the city attorney, I guess, to make sure that it meets the legal boundary guidelines, and they start to count the signatures. I do know that there are some people that felt they, that they were encouraged to sign it regardless of whether they agreed with 1301 or not. And if you want to know why I don't agree with the petition drive?
Sure.
I don't agree with it because I don't think that it represents all the residents. I don't think that a citywide vote represents all the residents. Traditionally, when we have citywide votes, it is imbalanced by the higher voter turnout districts. So as we know, you know, some districts vote more than others. District 1, for instance, has over 60% voter turnout typically, while District 5 has a 50% voter turnout. So I believe that when they put in districting, they put in districting in order to make it even representation, one vote per district, and then at-large mayor. And I think when you have a citywide vote for a particular issue, it is a heavier vote turnout. Number one, it's a heavier vote turnout when it's people that are very energized about the particular issue, and it is the more voter turnout, higher voter turnout districts.
Well, the critics of the related proposal would say that the commission vote did not reflect citywide sentiment, I believe, wouldn't they?
They would, but if you look at the opposition, it is very condensed into a particular district.
Right, but there, my recollection, my recollection is that there were not, there were very few, if any, community groups around the city that favored it, correct?
I will tell you that I represent three neighborhood associations, two neighborhood associations and a condo association. The president of Carriage Hills actually spoke at the city commission meeting
Right.
in favor of the project. And residents in Carriage Hills have spoken in favor of the project, maybe not at a commission meeting, but outside of the commission meeting. Driftwood Civic Association president had said that they weren't taking a position, and Boulevard Heights also wasn't taking a position.
Why not?
But, but the HCCA led people to believe that it was a unanimous vote amongst their 12 members out of over 20 civic associations. So, you know, people want to speak for everybody, but the only ones that are elected to speak for everybody are the six commissioners and the mayor.
One of your colleagues, maybe you saw this, one of your colleagues on the commission, Tracy Colari, said it from the dais at a commission meeting, maybe in April or May. It's gotten a lot of traffic online on social media. Tracy Colari imply or said that she thought some of the opposition to 1301 was racially motivated because the developer is Cuban-American. Do you recall her saying that? What's your opinion about that?
I recall her saying that. I think it was, might have been taken a little out of context. I've heard people say, "We don't want another condo because we don't want anybody else moving here." And then I have heard people say that they don't want those people moving here. So whether or not it was directed at the developer's ethnicity, or it's directed at the general, you know, Hollywood's a very diverse community, and we represent over 60 different, you know, ethnicities and 20-some-odd different languages by our residents. So I believe that we should continue to have a diverse community, but there are some people that, you know, it's the last-one-in syndrome, you know, "I moved here, nobody else should move here" kind of thing. And I just don't believe in that, you know? We have a housing cost crisis because of supply and demand.
Okay. By the way, you have just
Like they're not, they're moving here, and we need to provide supply in order to maintain the demand. And if we don't maintain supply, then the people that can afford it, that want to move here regardless, jack up the prices, and eventually it's going to be unaffordable for working-class people to work in our restaurants, work in our schools, work in our city, work in our hospitals and stuff like that.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't assume that the related project is gonna help your affordable housing issue, right?
I do believe that.
How much is, are the, are those units going to go for?
Regardless of what those units go for, it will help our affordability. And if you'd like me to explain, I could explain my particular philosophy.
Please, please, I'd be curious to hear that.
So if somebody wants to move to the city of Hollywood and they have a million and a half, $2 million to spend, and they can't find something that is a million and a half or $2 million to spend, they're gonna go find something for a million dollars to spend and overpay for it, and then remodel it. And then the person that is selling that particular dwelling for more money than it was really theoretically worth, they're gonna go buy something else. And it's a trickle-down effect. So they're gonna inflate the prices of East Hollywood, which will trickle down to Central Hollywood, inflating those prices, and then those people, if they still want to live in Hollywood, they're gonna go to a little bit more west and inflate those prices to the point where working-class people won't be able to afford to live here because they're gonna be forced out by people that are willing to spend more money. The other thing in regards to how that's gonna better fit affordable housing is the amount of taxes that they will pay, whether it's contributed to the CRA or to the general fund. If it's contributed to the CRA, which is a CRA we all know is gonna go away sooner or later, then those taxes are given back to Broward County, that Broward County then gives it back to the city in the form of the ILA, and those funds are used for affordable housing. They're used for first-time homebuyers program that we just put $4.7 million into. It's used for housing rehabilitation, which is to keep housing affordable. If somebody can't afford to fix up their house, there's grants available that will help them fix up their house so that it increases the values and the appearances of our neighborhoods.
Even if that theory is, is well-grounded, how long would it take for those taxes to get there and provide this benefit you say will happen?
As the, as soon as there's a CO and they're paying taxes, that money is gonna go into either the general fund or the CRA, depending on where it is at the time, when it's built. And if it goes into the CRA, the CRA, under my particular philosophy, and what I would vote for is to refund more of the CRA money to the city and to Broward County, and if it goes to Broward County under the ILA, it will come to the city for affordable housing and a small percentage for, I think it's 15% for infrastructure improvements. So it's not gonna stay in, it's not gonna stay in the CRA, as far as I'm concerned, and it will help benefit all of the city.
Kevin, we've talked around an issue that I just wanna, wanna amplify, have you amplify. You're, you're one, you were part of the five-member majority on the city commission that voted in favor of the related project, the high-rise.
Correct.
And my first question about that is, you know, do you expect in your district, in District 5, I mean, is there, is there gonna be a voter backlash against that?
I don't believe so.
Why not?
Because as far as what, you know, all the emails that came in that were encouraged by a group of residents, there were very few emails from District 5. I can count on my hand how many people have reached out to me and said they didn't like the project. And I can also count how many people I've spoken to that had the yard signs that said, "Now I understand it." And I could tell you how many signs have come down that were previously up because they understand that not everything that was being said is accurate.
Okay. I do want to bring up an issue that we, certainly we editorialized on, and I greatly respect and appreciate your opinion and your knowledge on these issues. You know, we, we, there was a moment where the city commission basically told the residents that, that, that the related project needed to be approved, and if not, it could jeopardize the pension benefits of first responders, police and fire.
It was never said.
Really? Okay. It's been out there for a long time, but if it needs clarifying, tell us.
So it was never said. The only person I know of that said it is the, a former union president that is no longer a union in the city of Hollywood. So there is money that is expected from the 1301 project as to benefit the city's financial health. One project isn't gonna do it, but projects like that is what we need in order to sustain, have a sustainable future for Hollywood. And I believe that once we, you know, have these projects in place, we can have an ability to lower our millage rate without, you know, jeopardizing the capital improvement projects that we have for the city.
So I guess it was a coincidence that on the night of the vote, there were so many cops in the commission chambers?
No, I, listen, the cops, over the years, have always been in the commission chambers advocating for one thing or another.
So in numbers like that, that night?
Nothing, there were four or five cops there, you know? And there were several city, general employees there, you know? So I never said it. I don't think anybody said it, you know? A few million dollars a year in, in taxes is not gonna go to our pension funds. It's gonna, you know, we've been looking to do more projects to improve our city citywide, you know? And I could tell you that the, in 2011, when they had the citywide referendum to reduce police salaries and pensions, District 5 voted against that referendum, if you look at the numbers. District 5 appreciates our hard-working men and women of the city, our first responders and our city employees. There's other districts that voted overwhelmingly to reduce those pension salaries and salaries.
By the way, this, while we're on the subject, does Hollywood still have a significant unfunded pension liability?
It's in the 60s. I'm sorry, it's in a 60 percentile of funding.
Okay, your, your funds do not score well on the Collins Institute survey. But you're
The survey is not necessarily in favor of working-class people or our unions.
Well, it's just pretty much looking at, looking at, looking at, looking at hard numbers and, you know?
I understand that, but traditionally, the Sun-Sentinel doesn't necessarily have the same philosophical beliefs as the Collins Institute.
Well, yeah, on some things, but this is, this is simply looking at solvency, and Hollywood is in the same pattern as other large cities, some more affluent than, than Hollywood, where the general employees' fund is, tends to be rated, you know, A or B, and the first responder pension funds are rated D and F. I think Hollywood got a D, right?
I'm not familiar with the Collins, current Collins survey.
Okay.
But our, our police pension fund, I think, is even higher than our general employees' pension fund, if I remember correctly from the last email I saw.
You, this, you and Mr. Vargas seem to have, do you go through this regularly? Is he stalking you?
I don't know, Mr. Vargas, you know, you know, you always know there's an election coming up when you see Mr. Vargas, because he always pops up around February of an election year. So I'm not really gonna talk negatively, you know, about Mr. Vargas. He's a schoolteacher. I have a tremendous amount of respect for our schoolteachers. I think they're underpaid. And, you know, I, I just make it a practice to be more positive and optimistic, just like I'm optimistic about the 1301 project, that we're gonna receive funds to help our budget and to help our neighborhoods. I'm optimistic about our city and where we're going. You know, some people wake up in the morning, they choose to see a glass half-full or half-empty. I always choose to see it half-full. When you're running against an opponent, of course, you're gonna say it's a quarter-full or it's, or it's three-quarters empty, because that's the, that's a campaign.
Kevin, has, has, has Driftwood or Carriage Hills or any of the homeowner associations in District 5 sponsored, or are they gonna sponsor a forum between you and Mr. Vargas?
Carriage Hills doesn't traditionally do that. I believe Boulevard Heights is gonna do it in October.
Have you and Mr. Vargas appeared publicly together anyplace?
Yeah, like you said. Not in an interview fashion, but obviously at certain events that I go to, he's been coming to since he started to run.
Okay.
So, I mean, even the associations you'll see have said, and if you watch social media, the association, people in the associations have said, "He just shows up when it's time for election time. He doesn't come to association meetings other than that time."
Is
And the chamber is, I'm sorry, the chamber is gonna have a meet and greet. I just saw an email about that.
Okay, yep. Is crime or the, and the fear of crime becoming a worse problem in Hollywood?
I believe that when I saw the last report, our crime stats were down. Obviously, if you're impacted by a crime, it's the worst thing. It's all perception. You know, I talked about this at one point during one of the candidate forums last time, that there's a perception that when it's happening to you, you know, the guy that is living in his neighborhood and he didn't have a chance to cut his grass, and code enforcement comes by and gives him a citation for not cutting his grass, thinks we have too much code enforcement. But yet, the neighbor that saw the guy that had his grass was too high, doesn't think we have enough code enforcement. Or the guy that gets a speeding ticket in a school zone thinks we have too many police around with nothing better to do than to give a police, a speeding ticket, but yet, if you are a crossing guard or you're a parent dropping your kid off for school and there's cars speeding by, you always say, "Where are the police?" Prior to being elected, you know, like everybody, you see a police officer doing radar and you say, "Don't they have nothing better to do?" Now, as a, as a city official, knowing how residents feel, you think, you know, thumbs up, guys, good job. It's all perception.
Commissioner, I wanted to ask about one other aspect of that 1301 vote, and that was the question about Commissioner Sherwood's eligibility to vote. Without, you needed, you needed five votes, not four. I can refresh the controversy over that, if you will, but if you believe that her vote was legal, why do you believe it was legal?
Well, I would believe, I, I believe that a 4-2 vote would probably be sufficient for that also, if she was removed from office or she resigned early.
Okay.
So why do I believe it's legal? Because this was, whatever she did, she discussed with the city attorney. We were aware of her particular personal issues, and we knew that she had maintained her driver's license and her voter registration in her district, and she was staying at one of her child's houses when she was here, including the commissioners that voted against the project. We're fully aware of the circumstances. So if there is a OIG investigation or the governor wants to investigate, I mean, that's for them to do. It's, I don't believe it's my responsibility to make a vote or anything to remove a particular commissioner. I don't even think that's in our charter. I, I, I mean, yeah, you know, when you are against something, you're gonna look at every different aspect to see how you can win. I don't, I don't think that, you know, it's, I'm not a lawyer, so I really couldn't give you a legal determination of why she was eligible to vote.
Okay. I City attorney, certainly, the city attorney certainly seems to be, to be, when, when a decision has come down regarding this project, this, the attorney has seemed to be consistently opining in, in the way the supporter is like, correct? Both on the eligibility and now on the petition.
I would, if that, if that's the way you interpret it, I think that, you know, an attorney's gonna make a determination the way he feels comfortable, you know, the way he opines. I've heard there, there are some attorneys out there that don't agree with him, but the ultimate authority would be a judge if somebody was to file some kind of a lawsuit.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, are Hollywood city police officers allowed to take their patrol vehicles home?
Yes.
And why is that a good system?
From what I understand, it allows them to take, they take better care of their vehicles when they're not pool vehicles, and I could tell you from my personal experience in my own, in, in, in the private sector, when you have pool vehicles, they're not treated as well as when they're personal vehicles. It also benefits neighborhoods that have patrol cars parked in them, whether they are from that jurisdiction or not.
Is it okay?
Can they, can, can they take, no, can they take them home even if they don't live in Hollywood?
Correct. I believe that there's a distance criteria that they are reimbursing for gas when it's, when it's determined outside of the jurisdiction.
Is it okay to take, is it okay to take, for a police officer to take his son or daughter with that patrol car down to a Dolphin game or a Marlins game?
No.
How about go to Publix in Pembroke Pines?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, maybe if it's on its way home, I don't know. You know, we legislate and we create taxes. We're not involved in, you know, and we approve the collective bargaining agreements. But we don't deal in telling the police chief how he should operate his police department. If there's a complaint, I'm sure it would be addressed.
I understand. I want to return briefly to the subject of housing and affordable housing. You know, you indicated in response to a questionnaire, our questionnaire, you're hesitant, you're not in favor of an idea of declaring a housing emergency in Hollywood. And you noted that the city, like cities everywhere, I think it's mandated by the state, the city has, now has an affordable housing advisory committee. Has that affordable housing advisory committee done anything tangible that addresses the affordability issue?
They advocate for certain programs that help keeping housing affordable. They opine on those, and they also have opined on homelessness. So the city has a agreement with an organization called Hope South Florida. And Hope South Florida has operated our rent subsidy program for COVID relief. As you know, that there was ARPA funds and other COVID relief, you know, CDBG, CV or whatever it was, came down to help people that were unemployed due to COVID with their rents, and they operated that. We spent, I don't know, something like a million dollars or so, helping people so that they wouldn't get evicted. We also have a tenant-based rental assistance program that they operate, where we can use state and federal funds to help keep people from becoming homeless by paying their rent subsidy up to, I think it's 18 months. As long as they're working and they're paying a percentage of their salary to their rent, the Hope South Florida covers the rest of it, in order to make sure that people don't become homeless.
Okay. Does Hollywood in its development Does Hollywood in its development?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gruber was appointed to the, uh, uh, Affordable Housing, uh, Advisory Board.
Okay, yep. Does Hollywood have in its development code, a provision that a lot of other municipalities have, which basically says, I'm, I may be oversimplifying it. Uh, a developer comes forward with a proposal for condos, apartments, townhouses, single family homes. That developer can buy their way out of any affordable housing obligation or responsibility by writing a check.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I know that Senator Geller, you know, uh, had come to the city to promote a countywide project that would allow, um, hire, if we adopted their plan, that it would allow us extra points in cert tax money if we, um, encourage developers to, uh, provide affordable housing in their units in certain areas. We haven't, it hasn't been brought back to the commission yet, though.
Okay. What does extra points mean?
It, if, if we have a grant application for a cert tax grant, you know, the penny sales tax? If we have an application in, um, it gets extra points to be moved higher up on the priority list, um, or the, uh, valuation list. If we have, if we, uh, have an ordinance that the county is trying to, uh, promote, encourage.
Okay. All right. We haven't heard much from my colleague, Dan Sweeney. Dan, I, I don't want to monopolize the forum here if you have questions.
You know, uh, the, the, the couple I had on my list have, have really, uh, already been covered. You know, I wanted to ask about, uh, whether he's done anything with his opponent and, and, uh, and a couple of things about affordable housing, but you, you guys have, you guys have asked him also.
Okay, well, that sounds good. Kevin, uh, you, you talked about the diversity and tremendous and great diversity in the city of Hollywood. I know there may be no way to know this statistically, but I'm going to ask maybe just your, your sense. You, 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 you strike me as being somebody who's very, very close to his district. Um, how much of the residents of District Five, you know, i- in terms of the demographic changes in Hollywood? Do you have a lot of constituents of, for whom English is not their primary language?
Yes. Um, there are, there are residents in District Five that English is not their primary language. There's Hispanics, there's, uh, Haitians, there's Muslims. And, um, not so much as, you know, that's about, you know, the, the primary, um, numbers. We have some, uh, East Asians, uh, some South Asian. Um, we have a, um, Serbian church in our neighborhood now. Um, but if you look at the, uh, the statistics, about fifty percent of the population is, uh, Hispanic. Uh, not necessarily means that they all, um, speak all Spanish or only Spanish. Um, I talk to a lot of residents on a regular basis. And I have a lot of Hispanic, uh, residents, Latin American, uh, Cuban, uh, Colombian, uh, that all support me and have supported me since two thousand twelve.
Fifty percent in your district or citywide Hispanic?
My district.
Your district, okay.
Hollywood doesn't have perimeters for selected officials, does it?
We do. This is my last term.
Okay.
So I hope somebody steps up that, um, can really, uh, advocate for our residents in twenty twenty six. Um, somebody that's going to be involved, somebody that's going to be part of the city, somebody that's going to be, uh, on advisory boards, somebody that is going to be part of our, uh, philanthropic, uh, community. Um, so that they could properly represent, provide the representation that the residents in District Five, my neighbors and my friends, uh, deserve and want.
How long have you lived in District Five?
I lived in District Five. I moved to District Five in nineteen eighty six. Um, I bought my house in nineteen ninety five.
Good.
Hi Suzanne.
The smoking ban in Hollywood Beach that came up, I think Commissioner Blatner brought it up years ago and you couldn't do it because the state said you guys don't have home rule rights when it comes to smoking bans on the beach. Now, the beach has done a ban, Fort Lauderdale is looking at a ban. Do you think Hollywood is going to jump on that bandwagon at this point?
As soon as that passed legislation, I brought it up at a commission meeting and asked for a uh, ordinance that will, um, that will, that we can get into effect as soon as the governor signs it. We haven't seen the ordinance yet. But I, I, I am the commissioner that asked for it. Um, as a matter of fact, if you remember, I'm the one that brought up the fact that we should have no mo- no smoking signs on the beach and have a resolution number next to it to make it more official than just a suggestion. Because whether it's a resolution or ordinance, people don't, you know, necessarily equate, you know, know the difference. And by putting a resolution number, it would be, uh, I think more encouraging. Uh, and that would be a, within the city's legal authority to make a resolution that we encourage no uh, smoking. Now we can create an ordinance that says no smoking on our beach and our public parks.
And who would enforce that?
So in the, um, current budget, we included additional, uh, community service officers for the beach, for the broadwalk and obviously they would en- enforce it, you know? It's hard to make laws that you, uh, that are difficult to enforce, but we have all kinds of laws that are difficult to enforce. Doesn't mean we shouldn't have the laws.
Kevin, Governor DeSantis signed that, uh, that bill, I think sometime in May.
It was in July.
What, a big pardon?
I, I believe it was in July, but I could be wrong. Um, I, I did bring it up. Um, why it hasn't come back to us yet, I don't know.
Okay. That's, uh, uh, as Suzanne noted, and I, I've seen letters to the editor at the paper, uh, Lauderdale by the Sea is doing this, Pompano has done it, um, you know?
Boca Raton, Delray.
Yeah, I want to do it too.
Okay.
It's, it's not just a, a, a health issue, it's a, uh, environmental issue, it's a litter issue. You know, if you, if you talk to people that do cleanups on the beach that I, that I have participated in, um, it's amazing how my cigarette butts are out there.
Yep.
So, we need to
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
I have a question on another topic, but I didn't, I didn't want to, uh, get off the smoking topic if somebody else had questions about it. I've got a question on something entirely different, and it's just, it's not a Hollywood specific issue, but I, you're close to the ground there. Uh, in your district, have you had any situations in the last, you know, few, couple of months? Is there a situation in District Five where the Broward County Supervisor of Election has consolidated or eliminated or moved polling places in this election?
So in District Five, we went from eleven precincts and I think nine polling locations to three precincts and three polling locations. The only feedback I've gotten is from my fifty five and over community that used to have their own polling place in their clubhouse. And now it's outside of their clubhouse by about, you know, a couple hundred yards. It's just, you have to go around in order to get there and it's not a straight line.
So to change from nine polling places to three, I mean, in your, in your opinion, that, that's not that big of, of, of an adjustment for people?
I think it's a little bit of an adjustment for people. Um, but fifty percent of the people that vote do early voting or mail-in voting. And I think it was just a way to, um, consolidate things. Um, I didn't really speak to him about why he did it. I can only, uh, hypothesize based on my experiences. Um, it's, uh, they're still centralized. And I think that it cuts down on some of the confusion and they're more in the neighborhoods. So prior to this, uh, MacArthur High School was a shared polling location between, uh, the Graceland neighborhood and Beverly Park, which is on the east side of the Turnpike. So Beverly Park used to vote at MacArthur High School and they would have to drive, you know, uh, somewhat of a distance in order to vote. Now I think the polling locations are more in line with their neighborhoods.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, look, uh, I think we've covered a lot of ground here and, uh, I I wish Mr. Vargas were here, but he's not. But Kevin, we really appreciate your participation. Thanks for your, uh, detailed answers to questions on a variety of topics.
No problem. Can I have a closing?
Of course. Yes, go ahead. Yep.
I would appreciate, um, for, 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 uh, my opponent that has been out there and for some of the uh, people in District One to say that, uh, I have no support, uh, is contrary to what, uh, my website might show and what my social media might show. Um, my website has, uh, videos and testimonials from residents of District Five about how I've impacted their lives. And obviously my social media, uh, is very robust and in touch with the residents of District Five. And if you, um, and I think one of the greatest accomplishments that I've had was to get this salsa fest that we had this past weekend to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month out in District Five. You know, in, uh, two thousand eight, they built a community center with an amphitheater and the amphitheater has been used. Uh, in recent years, it wasn't used as much and it's my goal to make sure that we are using it more because it's uh, public, uh, events shouldn't be isolated to District One. They should be, um, available to all the districts if it's available. And we have an amphitheater in District Five, so I've been fighting hard for my residents and my neighbors to have more stuff out here and we, um, uh, created the Memorial Day Salute to the Fallen event out here. And now we have salsa fest out here. So I would encourage you, if you have any questions, to look at my website, HollywoodBeaterman.com or ReelectBeaterman.com. And, uh, my social media, which is, uh, very interactive with our residents.
Yep, I, I was looking at it this morning myself. Okay. All right. Thanks for that closing, Kevin.
Thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time to speak with me. I appreciate it.
Sure, very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.